And our mission statement is create better future, one student at a time. Moving on to public comment.
Zero.
Zero, thanks Joe. Okay, and recognitions. We have District Two Honors Choir from Whittier Middle School, Seventh Grade Izzy Gugans, Dagney Gold, and eighth grade Jeffrey Turco and Julian Soni. We have District Two Honors Band from Whittier Middle School, Noah Kelton. From MCF, we have sixth grade student Addison Cohen, who's the Tri-Optimus Student of the Month. We have R two sixteen and A, our little X program, the top performer for fiscal year twenty five, which is exciting. A top performer in the program that has met exceeded state target measurable skill performance target. We would like to recognize Turner for his service with R six sixteen score. And Neat Stroh from EFLs, recognizing inspiring school employees, she is the top ten finalist in Maine. So adjustments, we don't have any.
As far as I know.
Okay, and then is our present.
Thank you for your patience to the opportunity to share a little bit about our school. My name is John Vin, I've been in the field for fourteen years, worked there for twenty-two years now. So much more to me than anything, I think. I'm gonna share a little bit tonight about where we are as far as the school goes and then also share what we're working on. Just to give you a little background information about first two populations is down. Fourteen students from the end of last year made a very good eight grade class deal last year, probably heard in the air, but big. I think we're to know everybody, we're twenty hundred fifty kids. Average class size has gone up, and I'll explain why, average class size has gone up in a few minutes. There are percentages. I believe it's advanced, number's gone quite a bit, forty-four percent, those are students who fall fall by whole three boost price lunch. We had a few different changes this year, we're down one teacher from where we were last year. We switched where we do something and it's actually opened up some really nice opportunities for band force comments in the morning and that does take away from kids having lunch with their so many great group here, which has been very positive. Our teachers now teach four classes a day instead of five. With what we've done is we've reduced from six classes a day to five for everyone, for our students. So teacher drama for for those five. And whilst it means that the class sizes have gotten bigger, it also means that they have maybe more energy rank to each one of the classes. It's very difficult to get with your teacher the same rank five prime, but to do it four times, it seems to work really well. Source of pride that I wanted to share with you today, we have very best staff. Very fortunate that the same group has stuck around for many years. We had zero hires this year and what you have in a school building, there's such an opportunity for a continuation of work in those placements that are very, very positive amongst the staff. I really enjoy working with the people, very much a willingness to work together, we're trying new things. I also want to highlight some of the recognition skills here, both Leah Edwards is the current teacher of the year. We also have a number of other awards amongst our staff and, you know, honestly, go right now. The Thorndorf Board and highlight for you all the great things that each one of brings to our school. We are also a group that is connected, we're at the moment a school in the state of Maine that has its own regional national history day project and that's coming up, if you're interested in being, I'd love to sign you up today. We are also a bomber certified school, I think personal bomber talks about here for building assets, reducing risks and this, this, we've been doing this for about three hundred eight years now. And they certified us last year, which was exciting. We look for opportunities to bring people in. We have a number of different schools announced to come and see what we're doing in our school. That's always very, very exciting for us. And of course, we have wonderful students and we couldn't, you know, leave this, this slide without saying, it was nice to hear kids highlighted today for year losing. But there's lots of good things that they're doing and one of my favorite things is last year is the first we brought in for the functional life skills program. Our middle school kids have been attending public youth school, even though they're middle school kids. And it's really a big plus for our school for them joining us at the middle school last year. There are neat things that we're working on. Each class brings something different to Whittier Middle School and one of the things they'll learn about our students, our current students here. It needs support around risky behavior, it's just challenges growing up. We've been dealing with some rates and and substitute this year, some things that different cohorts. We don't have the same level of need or issue this year is things that the kids are teaching us. We need to learn more about this week, we need more help with this. So this is something that we're working on as a group this year. Deputy Wesley is involved, Dean of Students is involved, we are reaching out to bring more resources into our community. We do have a, 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 it was a real loss a few years ago and no longer is there. Staff, we are still looking for an FBN that has been a big, unfortunately, we have a rotation of substitute nurses in the building and that's been great. It does strengthen on leases or our hitters. And it's export, we definitely could use more winter classes with kids to have APs and need that additional support. And student attendance and also area of the, we are certain on the ride from Great Park in twenty twenty-one. Chronic positivity continues to be a real challenge and of course it carries over academically. We want to share with you what our focus this year we're working on as a goal. And first, I'll just tell you a bit about how we get through developing the school goal. In the last year, our staff is, yeah, got together, did a SWAT protocol, sure done. At this level of the school board, SWAT makes strength weaknesses, opportunities, threat. It's a good aim for us, this the administrator to get some feedback about what's going on in the building and what the teachers perspectives are. Then some leaders that were meant to kind of review with the teachers this year through that SWAT protocol. And we select the goals, those around what the teacher's office has biggest needs. Then we brought back staff, we started this year, staff able to write professional goals, many of those tied to our school goal. And now we're providing professional development as a leader team to the, to the teaching staff and kind of working together to, and our focus this year on differentiation. So school will increase our differentiation skills, strategies and readiness to meet student academic and behavioral needs. And the nice thing about this is we have real expertise in our building. Shannon, Shannon is one of our teachers at Whittier and she's a special educator. She is a great officer PD this year, working with full staff, working on the idea of differentiation and working to meet all students' needs. So I will read, read to you, this is part of her presentation on differentiation. And I want to highlight especially the second bullet there, focusing on management process, product and learning environment. Those are the kind of more areas of differentiation that we are all in with our staff right now. And what I'm hearing from your staff is, you know, a lot of what we're talking about is not new. But it's really good reminder about the simple things that we can do for students. We need to learn more what we're doing and help them to find access point for their own education and interest. Why does this matter in middle school? Well, there's, there's key pieces. It's not easy to get a middle school student. You know, there's a lot of competition out there for middle school kids and what's interesting to them and where they want to put their time or energy. But with differentiation, what we're trying to do is meet them where they're armed. And make sure that they are, want to find ways to engage and motivate us. There's a great range of learning profiles in middle school classes. The students who are excelling and ready for high school work and then students who may be further behind and were, were struggling. But curriculum, we are making sure that we teach that curriculum, we just have to find ways, how do we help all the students access that? I heard our, our teachers say she described herself as a an educator because there's some level of educator or educator that need to go together to make their kids more. This is what most professional development looks like. What I really like about it is was paper that where our staff is something that's very successful, very real. And she brings these tools to our staff, the staff are able to bring home tools and care and make plans and, and segments together. And what we've done was recently, we've had teams get together and make agreements about this is what we're gonna request the team to support the students on in our group and what we're seeing. And at this point, we're next to have to start to kind of make sure that teachers know, you don't throw away what you, what you're already doing or what you have. What's the area that you can focus on with kids to make sure that they are getting the most out of what you're offering them in the classroom. And our plan is to keep coming back to this. Like I said, Shannon has kind of kicked off, we've done two sessions. Kelly Adams is set up to do a session on behavioral differentiation. And, and then we're gonna go from there, kind of take advantage of the activities that are in the building and to continue to develop staff. So that's what we're working on right now and, you know, people ask me all the time, are these going, you know, at the middle school? I'm really proud of how things are going, very excited about how they're going, it's great work, awesome staff and a great group of kids. And the community has been extremely positive and so very pleased with how things are going, very pleased as far as middle school is concerned.
Great, thank you so much, John Vin. Does anyone have a question about Olivia, Olivia, Jeff?
I'm pretty surprised that we have zero in that area this year. Would have been nice to hire help again. But we, we're not finding somebody this year. Now, everybody back, head next, teachers, very quickly back.
So the question for you, is it gonna part be a less humble than you normally are?
A little less humble, yeah.
What, what's one of your first steps, retain that?
A higher level of people, you know, I think that's, that's the, that's the key. We need to find people that are, are ready for work and, and then give people opportunities to build relationships. And I think, you know, there, this group just has really come together and, and I'm gonna make the outcome of what we're doing. And so it's, it's great, we get to the end of the school year, right, reference letters.
I hope you're at the spot, I keep asking, but I don't feel wrong.
Any more?
Not sure.
All right, just sort of for the people at home. So I was reading your report this month and it says we have someone from the National Guard Counter Drug Task Force coming to meet with half the eighth graders weekly. So my first part is, how do you give them the half that meets with the National Guard or the Counter Drug Force task in the Keep It Real program? And then two, it says, you know, we need additional programming for our seventh grader as well. Does National Guard have anything for, for the most focus as well, or is that something we need to look at further?
So I've become friends with the principal for our middle school and so he reached out and because he has opportunities, he'd been working with National Guard, the guy who's overseeing CJ. And he, he said he would be interested in this and that's where those connections pay off. And I said absolutely, so they came over last year, he had a partner with last year. They came over and we talked for a while and tried to figure out where, where the, we have a wellness class, which is a health class. And we teach that eighth grade. So it just made sense to kind of work in this society that we're dealing with risky behavior because that's part of the curriculum anyway in the wellness class. So he comes every Monday and works with the wellness teacher. And so he's been with half the eighth grade now and then at the end of the first semester, he'll get to the other half of the eighth grade. So with our seventh grader, Bernie, the school resource officer, you know, she's actually been, hey, you think we can steal and have start working with sixth grader? She feels, you know, that that's really, we need to start thinking about these things a little bit sooner. And I'm not quite ready to give them off. But, you know, as far as seventh grade is concerned, we're kind of looking at some other opportunities right now. I think we're gonna help get into that later this week, Bernie and I, to see, see what options might be available there.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We do.
Sorry. In the Bible, certain people get like a lot of getting provided in their self, Bernie and the principals, these system principals getting provided.
It is, it's helping, it would not say they failed. So, so we're kind of working with the company to, to determine if they're really doing their job. But it also, it helps us start some important conversations with kids and families.
Anyone else, Jeff?
John, I'm putting on the spot here. Outside the, well, the personnel there at the end. And some, a bunch of ancillary teams. You know, just being for a day, that's kind of what it is.
I was talking to me about this a little bit earlier this week, we're, I think interventionist would be in need with us. I think challenges, you know, the kids get to us and we get a lot of transfers from, from other districts, so not only, you know, from R two sixteen. But there are working that are behind some skills that it's very difficult to find the time, the, the people to, to go back and to work those skills because the teachers have to work on them and they're working very hard to try to keep the kid on page, you know, to complete that stuff. Very, very critical, but there are gaps, there's significant gaps for, for some kids that we, it would be nice to have somebody who can help us fill those gaps outside of the regular classroom. Some kids need core plus more. This might say for the group here, for the public, we're one of those transferred back, we've only been here two years, but large families that are all over the country seem good and bad and you are in terms of this.
Thanks.
Yeah, just a question. I know this last, last, last month too, you guys, you don't like what a disappointment it was, at least compared to the others, was it? No, the other ones in district, are those tied with what we're talking about here with, you know, kids getting caught?
I would say they are. Significant number of those not, you know, paid for. We're really talking about maybe a couple of times a week, but it still feels like a lot. Maybe because when you start talking to the kids, you hear, well, this guy, you know, he, this, this is where he got this, or stole from my dad, you know, that sort of thing. And so those sorts of things are small as far as, you know, the discipline for, I mean, six weeks, or is it six days? It's, it's pretty, pretty reasonable, a lot of it is, is we just have conversations about with kids about when the being a friend of ours and who can make their choices with, you know, words, whether it's in class or in class.
It's very disruptive stuff.
Yeah. Pretty broken, all right, thanks, thank you.
Sean, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit about National History Day, several board members this year and that's one of my favorite events in our whole district. I was hoping you could talk a little bit.
Well, we, we have a good part of that history is, is a world organization and we are on Whittier History Day at Whittier. Kind of old school scientific sphere, but it's about history. So students have picked their topics that they want to do deep research on now. And they've actually started that process now of, of look, doing research, learning about whatever topic, it has to be, I think, twenty-five years old, so think back, that's, that's two thousand, isn't that a little bit scary? But, yeah, it's old history. But, but so they're, you're doing research on their topic and it, you know, this is kind of along with the idea of differentiation. The kids get to choose what is interesting to them and they, they need to find sources, primary, secondary resources and put these projects together and then get to choose how they want to show what they learned. And it may be some sort of, I think, fifteen day performance, we had to get them here and show their performance last year. There's about six different options, documentary. And then Whittier History Day presents to a panel of judges and you don't need to be an expert in the field because the kids are gonna teach you. And if you're interested in, I mean, yeah, we need to, it's a huge help and break. We need nine judges to come from the community and it's, it's often the other thing in all of this life and we have some act. It's nice to put the kids in the odd need for the topics and, and, but, you know, the pressure was not so great. And then we choose top judges and those kids go represent our school at the state competition, U-Mac March. And last year we did four or six kids for the national competition in Washington DC, so. I know there's some source of pride.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move on to our consent in general. In the consent, we have the number ten, right, for meeting minutes, submitting minutes from operations, personnel and finance and policy. Did we have some PR committee?
Yeah.
Okay. Would I like to make a question to you? All right, just question, do we need to make a edit?
I think we're gonna talk about moving forward, the, the chair committee kind of reports out during, during the meeting. So moving forward, there's no pressure or anything, but we can just speak on a little bit of personal finance. Oh, the one thing that was noted in, in the finance was PCS sub line was rather low compared to the other elementary schools, middle school and high schools. And so it's because there's, there's been a couple of long-term subs that are coming in there with one or two in the next couple of months. So I think that was even seventeen percent of the time. So I just want to make sure that they're gonna be able to have, well, through the rest of the school year, so that we'd be able to move money in a different line to cover that. You'll see on YouTube the way tonight, we talked about the stipend committee a little bit, so we'll learn more from that later. We talked about there were still a bit to the budgeted increased amount percentage this year due to too many things going on, S R for that. Some of the mining projects we'll talk about tonight and then we started talking about getting creative with maybe reorganizing. with maybe reorganizing the district Tuesday on this or any education, et cetera, type of maybe reorganizing the elementary schools.
Thank you. Does anyone from energy policy or operations want to give a brief update?
Just to highlight some things, we didn't have a bit, it was just an extra call to the committee. So we talked about our, so. Sort of.
Evaluation.
So we have that story. We're going to move that to the end of our year. We're going to come back and actually have policies working at that, you know, literally robust agenda. The other thing I would call the potential for the discussion we had around our current attendance. And the needs to try to be here and let folks know if you're not going to be here, just so that we can have fully prepared and marketable boards. Some more, we're going to have that policy, just to make sure people are flexed exactly what it is we're trying to do, which is attendance. Another thing I mentioned, we can get, we don't have a policy that addresses at high school. And I say that because I know the operations committee is talking about perhaps selling revenue space. So it would be nice if we're going to do that, to also have a policy that gives us some guidance.
Thank you.
Yeah. What is it? The, I think one of the biggest things that I got given in the community of the boil Elm Street, kind of wrapped out of there. It's one up two, so the building's still up and going. And we're, we're going to name, I don't care if this is going to fix it. This section broke. Hopefully not a new section after that, but that's kind of what it is right now. And and I wonder if we do, went over.
MCS. MCS floor.
Sure. Yeah, right. We talked about some of the issues that come up at the last board meeting about MCS, their lunch tables, stats, that, you know, kind of discussion what we could, can't do about those. And they've got a floor that looks odd is the problem that will have to be. We talked about two, we think that'll pull the and requests for a budget, not this one, but the one upcoming because what's, it's, it's a supply area. We're just kind of going to talk about it based on it. And then CDS, the faith thing, we're going to have to start taking on three and four year olds that have. Let's see what I'm looking for. See. Thank you. IEPs. So the state's going to help cover a lot of this loss that's initially up front. It's still going to be like, even with that, we're still going to be able to base it to where we can put these kids. And I don't, that that was really open to discussion. Maybe we put any, any interest there. Yeah, that's, all right.
Thank you. PR? Okay, we're going to meet tonight.
Yes.
So the PR committee, we're going to meet tonight for this meeting instead of next week after your office. So. Sure.
Both to relative to this paper. But when we're going to be discussing this, we send out the same date.
Yep.
Send it to our.
Forget. That's good. Okay, we have motion and a document ready to vote now. All right, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Opposed? Okay. Yeah, super. The case of new hires, just to remind everybody that we're looking there, that we have access to all of our new hires. We do have a new indoor faculty system to get to the middle school high school. That is a double use. Notices of retirements, not yet. Notification for resignation, Everett Hill, who's in ed two at PCS functional lifestyles program. Other notable things is the Elm Street School received a grant for eight hundred and forty six dollars and twenty eight cents from the Environmental Education Association, the FEEA. These funds will help support Elm Street's efforts to make outdoor learning a regular part of the school day for our youngest learners. They apply for a grant for pre-K through grade four. Hand one exploration, proper gear, being able to to easier around the darkness of the weather. So you'll be caring for about other grants that we've gone through FEA coming up in the next few board reports as they start coming in. Remember last year there was several of them that we earned off many of our buildings. We've already kind of had a peak there. The new superintendent committee I have put over to the finance committee as well as a policy to talk briefly about the need for a stipend review committee. So a stipend review, look at our, our, our teacher's contract with the CBA, the collective bargaining agreement. And the fact of there is all of the stipends that we have stipends for athletics, co-curriculars and leadership slash academics, like our leadership teams. And oftentimes those are negotiated items. So it is negotiated between the association and the board, part of the, the contract negotiations that are ongoing right now. And what has come up time and time again is the fact that they sort of, no one really looks at the stipends, right? There, there was, it's difficult to understand how we came up with that list and how the amounts are in those lists where they were originally. And so there was, you know, just conversations from the association and from the A team as well as board. And so we just need to get around the table and talk this out and see if this is actually, like, put it all together. Does the job description map the amount for the stipend, map the responsibilities? So that's what the plan is and there was a, a, a sort of a role. We hope to fill that tonight later on with a nomination from the board, joint stipend committee. We are hoping to meet on our January workshop day. There's, there are now who could join, that's eight to eleven thirty. And then on January twenty sixth, Caitlin will get used to that. Okay, got it. And the part of that will be able to join our Don King, myself and and an association member, these teachers that do stipends, teachers that do the whole stipend. So we can really take a comprehensive look at that for you in a hour. And that team has no decision making authority. They will present findings to the association and to the board, to that bit. They could consider that during the contract negotiations. So really just a time for everyone to talk about it and then make a recommendation for the, the negotiation scene to consider at the table. So hopefully you'll consider throwing your name in for that. We are looking for one board member. You also have as part of mine is our sixteen Canadian newsletter that comes out once a month, hopefully get a chance to add that. Just to give you a hint, like, is it through sports? It's more that's tracked the accounts. Usually the newsletter is viewed around two thousand times, which is pretty cool. Even see that of like where people open it up. So it does get opened all over the place. And then also talked about too, I love that all our work is just really overlapping. It speaks to the teamwork. Here's part of that is CDS stake. As we talked about briefly, it's younger side on to taking four year olds. You know, we already have four year olds in part of pre-K. So we're looking at how to be that aren't enrolled in our pre-K that have a piece of experience. You're twenty seven, but we heard a really good provide funding for supplies for their teachers because really our pieces, we need a teacher unless OT, P, speech for a student with their own easily have. And we, we put them. And so right now we're eyeing an exclusive pre-K at Holy Community School. But as you know, spacing is, because we're at faith. So our staff is part of the CDS steering committee, the John, Joe, the special editor, Brandon, CS principal, myself, looking at these guests as to what needs to be refurbished or changed in order to be able to serve four year olds next year and then three year olds by key. When the law does take on the three year olds. So if that ripple effect, yep, we're going to have to pay for it. I did about, but they're not paying for spacing, they're not paying for transportation, they're not for bus. And those are, so those are critical areas, you know, in our district. So stay tuned for more information on that. And then just briefly, there's a budget well underway, behind the scenes, our principals are working on their budget sheets. So again, they get their budget sheets for the last couple of years, this budgeted spent and staff and give amounts to space for each one of those lines of financial. And they also have to have backup sheets for that because then later on in January, we have a one off a meeting and we go line by line through each one of those. So there, I have ten thousand dollars in supplies and they have to show me the item list of how they got to that amount. So that is well underway. That is due January sixth back to state. So we can start putting those numbers in. My direction has been in, it's an effort keeping the people and the programs that we have. Knowing nothing yet. So we start tomorrow, we are supposed to have eighteen collective meeting. And so then we'll start talking about, if you remember last year, we did the pain point, which is what is keeping the administrator up at night. So we'll bring that back. And then also things to add in that year is the two to three year outlook. So pain point is keeping them up at night. So also notice thinking about what is, what are we looking at as we go into the future? I think we're all sort of in that moment of, of, you know, Dawn's presenting mechanical services, bottom line, a project to fix for the future. But there's also, as you heard, on the staff needs and program needs that our students need from us when it comes to budgets. So I'm looking forward to getting, getting into the, the week of the budget eighteen tomorrow morning. So that's what we have. Keep in mind, because I know we're all waiting for Dawn and this team to talk about.
I just want to say one thing, thank you for keeping in the pain point and the future discussion because that meeting was held last year.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Any other questions, Randy? All right, moving on to full business. It is done. Moving on to new business. First up, we have a presentation for mechanical services, all in mind consolidated, we're keeping it relation.
Folks, this is fun?
Yes, it is.
Have a hell with everyone. Just goes a couple of minutes. Okay. Good evening, folks. Nice to see everybody again. We're here to talk about a couple of things. Number one, I did hear the discussion about the replacement of the boil technology. So we're pleased that the school district gave us the opportunity to, to look at that and do it for substantially less than another event. The good news on that as well is that folks should know that sectional oil is for a while because it's steam, some hot water. So it's sort of what we grew up with steam raiding gears. Oil factories were not capping those sections because they thought the whole industry was going to convert into the hot water. But it was also more of a pressure death question, sort of a regulatory thing. So for a while, it was hard to get a hold of sectional cap oils. The inside of mechanical surfaces here is that once the sections were starting to cap, they sort of stuck a few away, purchased more than needed. So that's why we're able to help you out in that relatively short basis. So we're, we're ready to start the next month, is it? Yeah. Okay. So we're going to get that, we're going to roll next Monday.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hopefully. This is one you thought. Okay. Just come back here. So again, folks, we have with us here tonight. Again, I'm not just here, I'm a local organization. Steve Ferguson is the president of Eric's and Eric Norman is licensed professional engineer with capital services. Okay, so next one, that's Steve. He's a visitor this now. We're going to talk about project timeline, a little more of the mining infrastructure. We've talked about it in the past, but I wanted to sort of bring people back because I looked at the timeline and amazingly, and I don't know if you folks remember, but we were here a year ago when we started this process. So it's been a long time making this here. And then we're going to do a financial review. I think that, did everybody get a copy of it? Yeah, okay, great. So I'm sure you have questions on that. We'll look at that and and talk about next steps in time and then answer any questions that you might have. All right, the, so the next one we're going to look at, we're going to look at project timeline. And Steve, you're going to drag it down. You're just going to drag it down. It's what happens when you use a PDF. So. Yeah, start here in December twenty four, remember we, somebody in the board liked, I think, were at stabilization. So that's what we did in mind. And the other thing that we did was by bringing prepare chemical services and having it engineered by Eric and Steve and others. We were burning for a lot of things, including water. And one of the things when we did the energy analysis is that what you pay for in the water, in the mining school in particular, is a lot more on a per year basis than the other schools. And that's because I think that they provided some sort of emergency line for you. But that water savings that was previously just being gone through the boiler, going down the drain, you are paying for that. So we've, we've kind of fixed that heating problem as well as the wastewater waste. So in that timeline, if you take a look at what we started to do, the indoor quality measurements and that led to the, I've heard it also referenced to the SR, which we talked about when we were here in October, those were submitted a day early. So, you know, we celebrated after that. We didn't put it in at the eleventh hour, we usually did. But and you've also done an, an RQ, which we were pleased to have been selected in. And and went forward with a letter of intent in June and we kept on, Steve is going to go down another slide with his expertise in fingers. So we reviewed those, so applications here on October nineteenth. And then here we are to do a review for the mining school, which again. So let's talk about what's happening on a, a state level and time for everything else. So when we were together, our recommendation was if you wanted to, as a board and as a community, do the mining school this summer, which if you are selected for the revolving renovation fund, one, two or three schools, those can't be completed this summer, they can be started this summer. But if you wanted to stop the again down the road with mining school, which again, so that folks remember, of the nine course missions for school replacements, mine is finished at twenty five. And that was highest in terms of the schools that you submitted. And another factoid that came out between now and then is that of the ninety four schools that were submitted and reviewed and the state board of education only approved. and, uh, the state board of education only approved to the building and funding of two. And so the rest of them, what we worked on right now on a state level with the main commissioner's, uh, school fund, is, uh, just wrapping up, it's been, again, over one year, talking about how do we build more schools? But I've raised my hand as a non-commissioned member and had high attendance without getting a gold star, uh, actually getting more money for revolving renovation fund. Open the papers, put off and seen what Senator Branch is doing. There's something called LD eleven eighty two. LD eleven eighty two, which will be coming after in January, and that is to basically increase the debt ceiling that the state take on, to give more pay schools to do what? I built new schools, which I wouldn't really be behind, because why build one or two new ones a year? Let's fix what you have, especially with that forty eight percent of the schools made, incredible factoid, forty eight percent identified self-reported that they had a mold problem. Forty eight percent, and like a lot of your schools, sixty two percent had heating plants that were twenty years or older. So a lot of infrastructure issues, we're trying to get that revolving renovation fund up, but that's gonna be up to the legislature. So let's deal the here and the now, and which was our starting, which is if you wanted to, if this school board and the community want to do mine this summer, then what you have there is a vote on the board operational saving project. And I, what I did for that, there was no magic in it, I just looked at when your next board meeting was, which was in January. Uh, and recognizing that it may take longer for you to reach that decision. But, um, that allows some time for order of law to be decreed for the summer. Many of our schools, many of our school districts, uh, make that decision in October, November, so that we schedule our workforces to be available to do work when next summer, everybody wants to do the work. No one's in the building and mine is going to be messy. We're gonna up the sali, there's, it's going to be, uh, so I'm gonna, we're gonna make a nightmare for John, but we promised him that we'd clean it up, as we always do, but it's very messy project, and it will take us the entire summer to do it. Okay, Steve. So again, it's, you know, the, the way we're here was we took what another vendor said was one point six million dollar problem at mine, and we turned it into a forty three thousand nine hundred dollar fix to give you another ten years of life probably, because the section boiler was not that old. They were saying you place both in converting to hot water at a very high expense with, uh, you know, a thirteen year old boiler. So we, we fixed that, next Steve, please. So then we looked at, uh, for not only mine, but the whole district, uh, some projects that might be able to pay for the mining upgrade project, even though another vendor had done some projects. But we wanted to come in with a clean sheet of paper and say, okay, if we did a project, let's bring on our team, and we'll go fixture, fixture, school, tool, and validate that. If instead of they did water cleaning project, we'll go fixture, 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 and then building envelope. So next, we're gonna see my crystal diagram. And the reason we see red there for lighting upgrade, we did for all schools, LED lighting upgrade. I know that was one of your questions that you had, that was forwarded to us. Uh, so that's not an opportunity. What we did see, um, building envelope is, is that is part of the project to help have the energy and operational savings, pay for the mining school improvement, there is all schools building envelope, putting in insulation, lowering heating costs. So we do that at all schools, including mine. At mine in particular, we would do the other projects that are highlighted there. So it's not a huge energy savings, because another vendor had come in before and done the, we call their gold picking fruit, the quick payback projects. Um, and mine in particular is, it's just an asset that needs money. That's what it is, it's like a lot of schools in state, and really, that's why it finished at number twenty five, in, in terms of the ninety four applications for new school replacement out of the five hundred and seventy four schools that exist in the state. Okay, Steve, next please. Wow. So some of the things that, uh, Steve, Eric, and the team did, again, bringing everybody back to this, is similar circumstance to the other schools in the district, where you see the red, that's, uh, CO two levels that exceed the limit of a thousand parts per million, which we don't like to see. Well ventilated schools, it's a thousand and hundred. And one of the things, listening to the presentation tonight from the staff here, is CO two affects a lot of things and, and inadequate ventilation. Uh, high CO two affects cognitive learning ability, uh, lack of ventilation, increases indices of spreading viruses of various sorts. And again, that's a domino effect. So some of the names, I'm trying to hold forward on here and drive bus, because you reported those. If you've got six kids or kids, and it can go, the domino effect from bus drivers to teachers. And, but it also, we really focus in on cognitive learning abilities, one reason that we want to improve ventilation. Okay, next Steve, please. So here's a sample of what Steve had taken with Steve and the team of the value. And again, so it's very supportive to some of the other schools and not typical, from what we see in schools made. And that was during a certain portion of the day, uh, as kids, the CO two level rises, because there was inadequate ventilation. And once we do a ventilation project, those goals go down to the, certainly the yellow, but more into the green. So that you would reduce pressure ventilation there. Okay, next Steve. So, uh, there were other things here, and maybe Steve or Andy, just wanna comment on the, this introduction soli here.
Yeah, so it's nice to be down here, because that's the very technical, uh, seven days, this is, uh, those Eric, you know, they have the interior ventilation. Oh wait. But you kind of see there, this coating is falling apart, and it's, it's on your, when the ducts go down. And it just starts falling apart, but then you also have to see your director.
So the plan would be in a retrofit, besides putting a new ductwork and new ventilation, and take this, that it's a great, take it up, clean the ducts, and make sure there are no fiberglass fibers that can go downstream into the classrooms. How about yours, Steve, you have something to say about ERPs and mine words and all that kind of stuff?
As the one area of the school, um, we found some units that were about ceiling just on, uh, my, uh, but they still were currently out there, which is why the future recovery is a classic, we need to pull there, and then last year yourself. Uh, and so, uh, we also found what's been out of school, uh, right, and so in order to, uh, here, at the ERPs.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Next one down. So this was another one of your questions, and mine, uh, mental school project, will build automation and temperature control system be replaced? And answer to that is yes. So the whole idea for, you know, you can put new ventilation air in, you can tie the boilers, but you wanna tell the boiler when to come on, and hopefully it's gonna come on less frequently, you want it to supply heated and tempered ventilation fresh air, you wanna exhaust that, but you wanna be able to control the temperature, and also, when students and staff leave a space, to actually slow down the amount of ventilation fresh air, reduce your energy costs, and that's the way that we do it. So CO two comes out, we bring in more treated ventilation fresh air, CO two starts to go down, and we back off those fan systems and exhaust systems and supply the adequate amount of ventilation and exhaust there. So this is a summary of what we've already talked about, and, and, you know, we would install new energy recovery ventilation units, clean the ductwork, give you basically a whole new ventilation and temperature control system for mine. In addition, we talked about all schools getting, building insulation, and at mine in particular, your question was, can you do boilers in that school? And the, the issue is that such a small, tiny boiler, that we wouldn't be able to do that. What we're gonna do is put a new burner on that boiler and make it more efficient, and also make it dual fuel. So propane's cheaper, you use propane, oil's cheaper, you use oil, but give you that flexibility, sort of play the market a little bit more. And I think the, the one thing that brings a little bit more comfort to Steve and Eric as engineers, designers and operators, is that because you had a problem in the past, at least there is a pipe for temporary outside. That would be an additional cost and time drainer if you didn't have that. But, you know, we've got, uh, the access to a number of boilers on trailers in the event that there was a catastrophic failure. But what you have for a boiler, remember, it's now fourteen years old, and the shelf life of that should be twenty five years. Okay, thanks. Alright, so this really after having our engineering team, our energy savings teams, having them all go through every school, looking for opportunities to find energy saving, because remember, the idea is to not take money out of your pocket to pay for, really, uh, you're looking at about a two point seven million dollar project at mine, to do everything that I just mentioned, including some of that, uh, building insulation in all the schools. And the reason that it becomes a three point two million dollar project is we do something pretty neat. We actually take what you would have paid for maintenance, excuse me, we have another vendor providing maintenance at almost eighty eight thousand dollars per year. And if you take that out of over fifteen year time period, and then we all escalate, that's a lot of money. So, uh, our idea is that we're gonna provide maintenance, uh, we can do it as we've already done with some other projects at a lower cost, because we're local, we don't have to send money overseas or anything, we're a locally sixty four year old family company. So what we're proposing is, number one, is to not reach into, which is like the goal of every community and every taxpayer, is how do I do what needs to be done, do it today, but I might pay for it tomorrow, but not pay for it at a eighteen percent interest. You know, don't tell me that story, and that's not what we're here to talk about. We're here to talk about the fifty K thousand, which is comprised of the boiler upgrade that we've already done at mine, and the one that we're about to do at the other elementary school. Pay for that out of a overall master lease agreement. The master lease agreement would be about three point two million dollars, and we'll get paid out of that. Additionally, that project that we will build this summer, if this is something that you want to do, we will build it this summer off of that master lease agreement, but you don't have to pay back the lender until the twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight project year. And the lender will provide the lowest cost, which is tax exempt financing for the period fifteen years. That's allowed for the main stat, you can actually go up to twenty years, but that's, a lot of lenders are sort of blocking in today's environment to go up to twenty. But it may be an option to spread it out even further. So the tax exempt rate currently hovers around four point two percent. I know that we're, we all watch the markets wondering when our home mortgage rates are gonna go down, and we're hopeful for that, but it also impacts commercial rates as well. So if the home rate comes down, the commercial rate will come down, but a good rate for today, tax exempt is four, four point two percent, and that is over fifteen years. So essentially, on the saving side, what I would ask the school to do, and what would be required, is for them to set aside a hundred thousand per year against that, again, two point seven million dollar capital project, that would, you know, John and you are following each other a little bit, would come out of CIP fund, it would be like a capital contribution. And a lot of communities, when they hear that three point two million dollars in capital and services, they think that that's gonna hit all first year, and that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about not letting you pay that out until the third year, you know, the twenty seven, twenty eight year, but you're gonna get the benefit of getting mine taken care of this summer. And once the maintenance contract expires with the current vendor, then mechanical services will take over. So they'll be doing all the service that you were formally getting with another vendor, and, and will be doing it, uh, for the foreseeable future. So if you take a look then, more snapshot, then even though your investment starts in that third year, your cumulative savings help to pay for and buy down capital costs for the future payment of, fixed payment of three hundred and one thousand per year. So even, even the odd years allow a parent board to remain on for your overall operating budget, if there is such a thing, of up to five percent. We're also trying to get that fixed as well. But the whole idea is, the, the program would be self-funded for the first four years anyways, before you went into a negative, but, um, you know, going to twenty twenty nine, twenty thirty, uh, it's still a small negative for such a large capital purchase. So this is, with all the effort that we made, since we were here and on scope, this is the best that we could come up with, in terms of working with our lenders, working with our engineering teams, and working with, uh, uh, our whole project management delivery organization, to provide the service that you currently receive. So that's not gonna go away, it's just that you're not gonna have what a vendor is doing. We're gonna do it less expensively, hopefully like better. Uh, I'm sure, but, but this is the best way that we can get this to happen if you wanted to do it this summer. And the other thing I'd like to remind, I don't think that you would do this, but this within the purview of board, make that decision, because you went up RFQ last May, and, and you selected an organization, and you went through, uh, what is required legally. Not saying that that is the way you would do it, that is an option for you. So that was our work, we did our work, we came back, we were presenting our, our best results, and, you know, we're happy to take directions, of course, we're checking in with the main department of education all the time. We also were fortunate enough in the time period, I think that I've mentioned, that, uh, the main department of education under innovation, under Dr. Glenn Cumming, we've been selected to Energy Office, uh, State One, our organization. So we've got a lot of ties into there, as well as the commission on new school construction, as well as main state board of education. So if funding becomes available and believed, I want to get it, I actually want to get it to this community, I would, you know, I've been doing drive bys for the votes on different things, and again, Steve, why don't you go ahead, two, if you could? One more, and I do one more. And one more. There we go. Yeah, I, I want to keep reminding folks that, uh, you've really done a good job when, in bad opportunity, go with a ten point two million, find, which would have been nine hundred and seven thousand dollars here for fifteen years. You've really done a good job when in bad opportunity to go with ten point two million and finance it, which would have been nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars here for fifteen years. And you didn't do that, that would have cost the taxpayers almost fourteen million dollars. Under S R F, that's five point nine million. But if you're, the, what I showed you, I showed you a way for a safe capital contribution of a hundred thousand a year. For the next program on mine, including service for all schools to cost you a half million. So you add the half million on to the five point nine and you're getting tremendous amount of work using a different approach. For six point four million dollars. So it's a, it's really a financial win, especially where there's so much focus from and rightfully so from, from taxpayers. Okay, can you go back to the questions slide? Alright, so that's a lot of information, a lot of discussion on mine, but you have any other? Tried to get to the questions that were forwarded to John's name, but there may be others, so please.
I'm sure there's other questions. Thank you so much, John. Um, I'd also like to invite members of our audience. If any of you have questions, we do have public comment as part of this section of the meeting, so please feel free to raise your hand and participate as well. Who would like to go first?
Oh, okay, John, okay, right, this, this thing means all changes on. If we're able to capitalize on those like energy savings that are in this chart.
Yep.
Who's coming up to, you know, for the next twenty to thirty year, three point one million dollars. Starting with eight thousand a year, where what eight thousand is coming from? Is that guaranteed or what if we don't get those savings?
Right, uh, so the fifty-eight thousand comes from uh, the work that we've already done. So we've actually, this is what you call a partnership. So work that we did at mine earlier this year, we have to pay them for you. It's not that you have to pay us for it because you're not paying us, it's because we haven't invoiced you. And it's because you're trying to think of how do I, you know, stop the flow for this district and this organization. The second piece is a product that you just approved of fixing for boiler. So the two, combination of those two, the forty-three and then the, the balance becomes the fifty-eight. In addition, your question is on annual basis, are the savings guaranteed? And the answer is yes. It's actually a statute requirement. So if you, just like with the, the C M A S project. Uh, if it's required there for the term of financing to actually perform what they call monitoring and verification of the savings. So that, that's not only monitoring the savings, but also maintaining the asset. So those two things are a statute requirement and this project would have those same components.
And this is from like building capital improvements, that's where we're.
I, I couple, there's building unloved improvements, they're also putting that new burner on at, at mine. And that's gonna be a substantial savings. Uh, we're doing a little bit more work at, at mine for water. Because we're paying for much where you get un, unwatered. Uh, and also to build, remember, putting in the whole building automation control temperature system at mine. A whole loop and instead of having three spare systems that don't talk to one another. We got one system that operates everything from the boiler to the ventilation that turns things on and off. To the exhaust vent, so everything will be harmonized, so to speak.
Um, this is gonna be right here. Okay, so for the fifty-eight thousand, is what you're saying, because I'm a little bit more mature. Have you guys only intended targets for that ever?
Oh, I don't, I didn't want to say.
It's not really a savings, it just went off page for now. Is that fair to me?
Uh, yes, no, it, it, um, it was added into the, the capital and it's taken out for fifteen years. So uh, it's a save from the current year budget. And start paying that now in that twenty-seven, twenty-eight cycle. And, and don't get me wrong, so you know, we love helping schools districts and everything else the best we can. But if you, if you don't like this plan for whatever reason, then February first, we will have an invoice for you for fifty-eight thousand dollars. Yeah.
Like, there's one that would be clear for all of that, so is it safe to spread out it, I guess, in more technical terms? Wait, is it part of that three point two?
It is, yeah.
Um, I got a question, is it worth cleaning out the old ductwork? I know we can do ductwork that track, right?
Of course, yeah.
Okay, so we're talking to a hundred percent ductwork.
If it's existing ductwork, it's in good condition and we can take out that liner and then uh, clean it. We've been able to do it at other school districts, that's what we'll do. No, that added cost of putting new sheet metal, getting sheet metals is not worth it.
Right, yeah, well, is there, is that factor in everybody's assessment? In your, how do you feel like you can use the law more than it's up there, since you're still in your highest? Or is it, because that would be a good question, and is that what you go out there and you're like, there you can't do that?
Yeah, we're, we're very confident that we'll be able to uh, abate the existing plastic insulation that's in the existing ductwork.
Okay, and that you're allowed to dollars, so it spreads like each year, twenty-six, twenty-seven, two oh two, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight, two oh seven, and. Two oh two, two oh two each year, that's only if I provide it, can allow three thousand dollars to cost you.
In C I P, right, because you're going, you're going to get uh, three point two million dollars for the benefit of capital and services. So something should, so a lot of times, do you want to have three point two million dollars and pay it all at once? Or is there something that you can put in that is meaningful as a capital contribution? That acknowledges the fact that this group, this community, this board has rebuilt this school. In a major way, using taxpayer dollars, not using S R F. And fortunately, uh, you did apply very nicely for all significant amount of schools to be replaced. But you see the kind of condition that unfortunately the state of schools, it's uh, the, the number is eleven billion dollars. So you're, you're not alone in that. Yes, so.
I was thinking more with projects, I think for the next few years, we don't need to pay for that.
That's. Well, that's one of the questions, like the board members here are always, it's like what level of C I P use the board find acceptable? For compromising like the maintenance on our buildings, because you know, if you look back, you know, the last many years and how much we budgeted for C I P. And that is your goal is to extend a hundred percent of it. If it isn't five hundred thousand, we put a hundred thousand to the side to be able to pay for this. We're at four hundred and we are locked in to more payments of three hundred and eight thousand dollars for the roof here. So that's just twenty thousand dollars for C I P. And, and yeah, and you all too, like, C I P is, is really turned into our roof fund, right? It's the whole need to, to outfit classrooms with a quiet room or have boiler breaks or have some capacity. There's some, some bleacher issues here at high school, so yeah, this is one of the pieces I think that you're gonna have to wrestle with is, is what is an acceptable C I P? And then in terms of putting it in the map of like whole total budget, because again, your responsibility is, is yes, you have to have. Like trying to figure out what to do and find it, but there is a bigger picture of you're responsible for the whole higher budget. Not just, not C I, not just the operation side.
And I, I would say a little clarification, because I can hope in your first presentation you did for us. You guys did advocate for it, but now you kind of did so, kind of, or maybe you realize that it goes from there now. Uh, but I would say that, that to us, we can't change that, that's necessary. Because if they don't have, you know, we have a period of time, they don't have, they don't have redundant, just stuff important that gets around. Um, so is, is it straight to just, like, what happened to, before you guys assessed that there was room in that? Or was that like a quick, you guys were there and thought, and then you got there and it was like now?
Uh, I think, um, I didn't find a couple ways and I'll give an opportunity to have the engineer comment on it. But one of the things is that uh, when we talk about reliability, redundancy, especially for any regrets that we do. And especially it's true for new school, reliability, redundancy and facility to see. In the case of mine, of course, we'd like to have uh, two boilers. However, the fact of the matter, if the boiler goes down, you've got a service company that's fifteen minutes away or close. The second thing is that, yeah, when you look at that tiny space, it's just hard to cram two boilers in there. But also, it's not every school you go into that already has external connections capability. For a steam boiler, not on water for a steam boiler. So the combination of those two, local source and is it a esoteric boiler? Like one of a, a woodchuck boiler or a foreign manufacturer that's difficult to get part for? Nope, uh, it's a Smith sectional boiler, you know, that we work on every day. So it would be, I'd be hard pressed and maybe the engineering team has something different to say, to say. Uh, we need to cancel the school today because the boiler is unavailable. I, that, that's not a hard one for me to see. I don't know, Eric, if you're, or Steve?
Hard to distinguish between all these, so before you spend it, you're warming it, burning it away, steam, of course, off block. That, that will be, you know, the job for a school. Get you the ability of different, probably you can have. It's, it's, now what, uh, will, more buttons that that just make you hold. Eric, just have piping in different structure there. If that needs something, there, that's probably, it happens, it happens. Um, okay, you get a boiler here, that one, you have. And that part, with your, the boiler bits. So the company handles, that's leading to that five year. Already being built, so if we lose the tech, we're not being used. Like we own the section at the old tree school. Here, well, that's a big deal. This is not, this time you have, the heaven on earth. That's probably to continue to practice that. Why, because there's plenty of, why would we have three, because there's a hundred on the shelf everywhere?
Mine, mine, down, also you, you know, you should, you should, you have to gather. And we get out, we try to get out, then you start jumping, what's the best sad resolution? School facility, they, um. Is there a question? It is called a growth, I mean, you started with something like that, and I said, it's very specific. So you start to believe about things that are not, um, Eric is saying, the actual management is not getting seen. The fact that we couldn't be before, whether they're committed, that's a secret. So, and then looking at the foundation, foundation is really important. That is, um, for, 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 for those who are, you know, it's just a, it's a very, thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that Claire, because as we just shared with, I honestly feel like we had to get to that now. Uh, so that all makes sense. Uh, I would totally agree with Claire on, um. I didn't mention current provided we spent, okay, you came here and said, um. I'm wondering how you're confident that, um, we'll be charged less by you guys, are you just charging less out of your rent? Or like service costs out?
Right, so uh, when we go to handle main contracts, nine times out of ten, we're substantially less than they are. I mean, they have, they're a publicly traded company, you know, they have share holders to satisfy. And uh, you know, they're, they're located near a camera, more located port than me, so it makes a difference.
Yeah, so if you spend the week, you guys are very comfortable, um, you guys can see all of these things. Um, so how does that, we spend the week, you're, you're just, like, an estimate of, like, air?
It, uh, it's a percentage that's in that you pay for repairs, right? So it, it would be twenty, twenty-five percent, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna, rest, looking at the current figure, I'm gonna start asking a question.
Sure.
When are we going to stop this, for three, three point six million dollars worth of repairs, why, where's, what it's gonna cost us, half a million dollars?
No, I think it's, it's more than not, not repaired, but just replacement.
Okay.
Yeah, I would be replacing.
But I, so here's the word, three point six million dollars, you have a replacement for half a million dollars, plus, hey?
I'm sorry, wrong.
Then I bought it, then it was five hundred thousand dollars.
So, yeah, so the, um, on, on the investment, it's all budgets. So it's not only mine, it's also that energy saving project and it's also the service. That's all included in that number. Yeah, financed four point two percent fifteen years. So it's not just them, it's the, the building insulation, the new boiler burn at mine. And then the full ventilation and building automation and control system. And the maintenance, that's one of the things that John was, not just a little freaked out, very freaked out. What do you mean, we're gonna just take away the maintenance now or the contract expires at June thirty of next year? And then we would take it all.
And if I missed you, the way of looking at the findings of this, again, three point six million dollars. Cost, it's financed over fifteen years and then you haven't spent only five hundred thousand.
Net, if, if take into account that you have a capital contribution of a hundred thousand dollars. And if you don't, if you take that away, and, and again, I don't think that'd be like the ultimate decision. Whether you do a C I P contribution or not, it just lowers those numbers by a hundred thousand dollars. That's just, I'm using an example of what's been used at other school districts in terms of how to think about how to find these things. You may think about it differently and that's fine, we don't have the C I P funds. What, what John shared with me was that it's a half million per year. And this pushes it out to, like I said, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
So ultimately, we believe to finance this to begin. So you were talking about the master lease purchase and it would be three point two million dollars.
Correct.
That's really, that's the starting.
Right.
Okay, and then we're going to start communicating savings over time, as I said, and. Also, investing a certain amount over time will be a hundred thousand dollars, thank you. And at our net, that we pay is five hundred thousand dollars, we get a conference. I think that's exactly, and that's also what I, I think, and this. Like, is it going to cost three point two million dollars or is it going to cost five hundred thousand dollars?
No, three point six is from the years twenty thirty, twenty forty-one. And if I could.
So if you're expecting to follow the top, and you have fifteen thousand down here, twenty-six, twenty-five, again. The fifteen thousand, that's going to be a, now, no.
So, it doesn't, it doesn't hit your budgets is what it is. The capital of the savings or capital contribution, uh, start in twenty twenty-six. Uh, maintenance saves, that's the same contract until we save it to fifteen thousand. Total program fix plus capital contribution is two oh two. And that first year, twenty twenty-six, if you're going down, Steve, there's no cost to you yet. It comes out in the twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight year when the project financing kicks into play at three hundred and one thousand dollars for a period of fifteen years.
So, we're paying three hundred eight year for fifteen years, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Start being twenty-seven or twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Uh, can I have a question about the insulation projects? Because you said in order for us to maximize on savings at every school in our district, we need great insulation.
Some level of insulation. So, so, yeah, I mean, there's, it's not even, there's no insulation. It's just that, um, for today's standards and to tighten things up, there's an insulation process that we go through.
And if you guys might, um, project what those projects will look like? So, we would start finding that maintenance goal, all you said, and then how, how do your time transfer and give information then? Do you want to maximize on our?
Right, so we would have, um, in some years, we would have a couple of work crews. We would have crews doing H D A C maintenance fees, uh, ventilation complete fees. And, um, we'd actually have the ducting, that's a separate crew. And then we'd have the building insulation, which is another separate crew. So, John's gonna love us at first, he's not gonna like us for a little while, but then he's gonna love us again when buildings are tighter and more energy efficient. But they're, they're separately distinct specialties. And then what we also do is we place a program project manager here that manages all the subs to actually keep out of this air as much as possible.
Are the guys, um, anticipating for summer? Like, let's say for time, if we go again this year, we start in summer, we go to insulation projects all under this summer?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
This summer?
Yeah, yeah. For that, uh, ventilation project, we would be substantially completed by October. For the energy saving projects, uh, the insulation would be done in summer. And some of the other things that we talked about, the boiler burn, those would all, they'd have to be done before you do your winter start next fall.
Hey, Don, how many years of service did you include from your company?
Uh, five years.
Five years, okay.
Yeah, the, the statute, you did not give you an opportunity to, let's say, I mean, this is the big one. Let's say you get S R and now you're getting all, right, all three other school buildings. So, where we would hope that our preventive maintenance tasks would actually get shortened. And that would help you, uh, reduce that serve cost. But in order to satisfy the statute, we have to include a minimum of five years of maintenance for those projects. But that's really the goal here is, um, I hope each and every one of those schools to prove for, for what you're gonna make a fine grant. And then, uh, with the standard amount of, the amount of remedial maintenance that you need to do, amount of preventive maintenance should go down.
Thank you so much.
What's my?
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions? Anybody in the audience? I have one. Did I understand everything for fifteen years?
Yeah, it's, it's a standard, it's so, when you do a hard capital project, there's a couple of ways to do it. You can do a bond, uh, which is, uh, as I heard competed all year long, uh, at the major construction, the government commission on major school construction. They went out and talked to a number of different lending organizations, P three, uh, it's the lowest cost, but it's also difficult and time consuming. The second option, which has been widely used in the state since nineteen eighty-six and is permitted by statute, is, uh, capital leasing. And there are local banks that do it, Matias Davis being one, and God Save being another. Uh, and there are national banks that do it, like Bank of America. And the local bank giving the local favor, but not necessarily the worst rate. And the national bank give you usually a better rate. And the, the reason that people aren't rushing in the door to lend three point two million dollars in capital is once it goes in, it's fine to run out. So, it's like an unsecured loan. And no bank, you can't, the national bank or Save wants to be repossessing a boiler do not payment.
I, I understand that. My question was gonna be, and the second part of the question is, if we go along and do this and commit to this, what is the expected life path one to be on equipment that we have in the house?
Uh, uh.
Pay offers and have to get in one right away?
No, no, no. Uh, so, you're talking about the new, the equipment that we're gonna put in? Yeah.
With using the stuff that we have now, it's like, what, what, what is the longevity we're getting out of this?
Right, that, uh, that building from a, uh, mechanical ventilation, vent point, building temperature control vent point, that could be a twenty to twenty-five year proposition. And then remember we talked about the boiler, that it was a thirteen, now fourteen year old boiler with a life expectancy of twenty-five years in a swelling thing? I think that Eric and Steve have seen sectional boilers in Houston schools that go thirty to thirty-five years. So, um, so that building will be renewed.
Great question. Anyone else?
Yeah, are we going to be voting for this thing?
No, no, we're here to receive the presentation and have some discussion and our operations committee is gonna be next week to discuss this further.
Okay, because I think you're still not understanding the summer convention reviews this slide. I don't need to depress you for that.
Sure. Sure.
So, you're pointing out here, it's hard to talk about the service for the nineteen ninety's modular classroom. So, we're probably, what exactly is that? Do you want to see it?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's probably, probably is, um, a little bit of money for that.
I don't have any questions, not, sorry, I don't have any questions right now, I'm just taking them along. Maybe you might involve me.
Sure. That's fine. Yeah, we realize it's a lot of information, but, uh, we wanted to know that we tried to do our work. We went through all the buildings, looked for any savings opportunities and tried to present a concept that has been used in other school districts. And again, in terms of the statute and the financial back to that question, that's been in place since nineteen eighty-six. So, um, we're not breaking ground.
So, other things like this, um, have been added to, on the half, uh, yeah. All the, all the stuff, uh. Pat?
Awesome. Um, so, here's, I'm gonna thank you for being here tonight, presenting on this, it's a lot of information, a lot of information then. I didn't know about, um, going there for me to present a presentation, um, because I was a little bit obvious. Or say, probably more behind, because I think we've kind of turned free from in this whole process of, you know, looking at all, looking at other great S R app. And I think, um, from what I understand, this is probably to be the best route moving forward in my mind. Um, and I'd like to challenge the C I P to be increased from five hundred thousand to six hundred thousand moving forward. Um, adding just one hundred thousand dollars to basically rejuvenate my school year over the next fifteen years. I think it's pretty much no wrinkle in, in my mind. Um, so, I'm really normal.
Thank, thank you for your time, thanks for your attention and thanks for your questions. I'm good.
Thank you so much.
Happy holidays to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we go? Yes.
You should put that in the committee meeting, so, um, fine.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, but I'm done, thank you. Good, Steve's been ready. Um, okay. So, we have one hour to discuss this, consideration this, uh, prior to the meeting. We have planned this one next week, so we can have representative questions. Now, invite anyone that's available, we're gonna be meeting at four thirty at the street conference room to discuss this presentation, and then come back to the board in January, a recommendation. But we didn't feel like tonight was really the right time to make those kind of decisions. So, that's what we're planning. Does anyone have any other thoughts you'd like to share tonight in self-creation? Yeah. Yeah. Thank you so much.
I can also gather questions if you have them, to one of them at New York and set up a Google Doc. That way, we have one spot and I can send them all to Don and his team to answer.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that what this is like. I won't, that's like, I don't think, yeah, so, I, I don't know if I can get that from this.
Yeah.
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 Um, I don't have much more time on this, people like, I, I guess I don't have my own room properly. I'm just trying to breathe time, which is, you know, my number's weird sometimes, so, you know, I don't know if we will sit down and make comments or something. I've been, I'm not.
I think so, that's about one of the first things we do, I was committed.
So, if any questions have tonight, Steve or the rest of the group, I guess, send it over to Randy, the chair of the board, and we will make sure people talk about them. And you're thinking of the first one?
Yeah.
And I want to show you some of them. Yep.
There's a question just on the chart. So, I think, if I'm understanding correctly, the first five years where we have been so impressive, it's providing, and what spend is less than what your capital gap is in the next ten years? We're, um, we're getting benefit, but we're not getting new access. So, what would spend be getting more than we're thinking as assets on our books? So, that's when it becomes in.
You?
Yes.
Charles, yeah. Yeah. So, back to the next one, yeah, Eric.
Some of that, that, that must be something else.
They're not, we're, we have to ask them.
Okay, so discussion is off and then on agenda again in January. And we're unclear at this point whether we'll get the vote, like, like, wrap today in January. Um, because please keep in mind, we won't have, we won't have results yet from the S N R F, um, at that time. That's at the end of January. So, our meeting is gonna be before whether we know we want, um, any other projects. And we do want to vote also the figures that, that were referenced tonight, that my school was ranked forty on the list of schools that applied, that correct, we, we have quickly here. Um, school forty, L Street was fifty-six, P C F eighty-four. So, our new school rating is much lower than, which doesn't, I just wanted to clarify that we're not getting a new school anytime. So, these projects, this is our future.
I also just wanna thank you, budget is, um, should be keeping all of this away. Last year, budget was just seventy-three million dollars, it was one point four six million increase, which was a five point one percent. Right now, I, in this estimate, some savings and benefits alone is, is, is one point five million dollars. So, so, when you start adding in other components to that increasing the C I P, not necessarily those that's the wrong step or anything like that, but those are all slices that you have to make sure that you keep a pulse on, because if we get, our focus, just focus on one piece, that, that I'm worried about the financial crisis that our district's gonna be in, because then budget's voted down. Because again, going back to the tax impact, it's a hundred and forty dollars on a hundred thousand dollar move. Seventy-seven dollars at the Kennedy Hall and eighty-five, uh, eighty-six dollars in mine. And if budget gets voted down, I have no other cuts to make, like, it's people at that point, I'm, we're at risk of really unsafe buildings. So, there's a lot of components that I'm gonna, sorry, like caution that would be sort of the gloom and doom. That's whatever, for like, states budget season, but that's really where, where I'm at is I'm looking for any cuts to people. And then also too, just the amount of, of cost to people that we have in the program as well as all needs and all of our five buildings, plus the job, plus adult head, is maybe staggering. And that's the long, the long-term focus, like, I, you know, it's my turn to turn the seat over to someone else. And once you're trying to turn your seat over to someone else, we all, we're all on board, everyone can leave it, matter of fact, we found it, right? And I just wanna make sure that we are thinking, I don't, are thinking out to two thousand forty, once the people that come after us are, aren't saying bad things about us.
Well, careful, we approve this.
Yeah, thank you for just taking my side and putting it into my mind. Because I, but remember, we have to be careful when we approve this because we're already booked for that roof project for the two years, but most of our C I P is already earmarked, sorry. So. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight. But we want this to be, we want to, we basically save a hundred thousand dollars of our C I P at the year.
Right.
To point towards starting from that first year of season, feel is.
I'm still not, I'm still not even that fifteen year campaign is going to not, not right to have to this project all again. He was talking about initially extending ten years, we're paying on it for fifteen years. And, and I can say how much you had, David says, we see, and we, it's a great, it's like, I'm here. And you can't predict that.
Well, that's my question to you, is how, seeing the big project, like, how is that, if someone's been on the board for a long time, we get to talk about the savings, like, and savings from that, like, how is the impact of our budget development over the past? Since that's been done, was that from like seven years ago, eight years ago, I'm even sure once even the lighting project and that, that's not something that we've talked about, like, and all this over, ever during budget development, like, all the budget would have been, you know, one seven million dollar energy savings, it's one point five million, like, we, we just don't talk about that. Yeah, I just, I just wanna be super clear and transparent, like, our taxpayers of, like, this is the cost and.
Yeah.
That's what I'm really nervous about, as well as maintaining safe levels of staffing.
Well, also just one part, like, I feel like you get kind of taught if you use like big presentations, like, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, we're gonna do this. Okay, what has to be done, like, do we need, is I control, like, I'm, I'm. Well, also just one part, like, I feel like you get kind of caught in, you use like, big presentations, like, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, we're gonna do this, like, okay, what has to be done, just like, do we need, is I control, like, I'm, I know that the people that want them. But what we need is the classes to be comfortable, like, temperature to be comfortable, like, if, yeah, I would love there to be, like, I feel perfect now, but all of that, I mean, we really need to, like, stop, and what do we need?
Right.
And, um, what, here's all the things, you know, he, from it, what is, but.
Yeah. What happens with buildings?
Yeah.
Like, yeah. Now, hold on.
Okay, Jeff.
Well, I have just respectfully, what the alternative to these projects, and what is replacement for C O Ls that are arguably dangerous, those, those, are children, and not people.
Yep.
Um, good, no, good, but I mean, you know, the. See, I mean, we're impressed, this, we, we do things positive, we can show a benefit, or we can take a handout really, yeah, so.
And what's the cost, it could be to take that in there?
What's that?
What's that cost gonna be to take a hand?
Yeah.
Because what we have the C I P for is these emergency fixes and everything, and if we invest money in this, we may not have those emergency fixes. Because it shouldn't be the, it's not, so that we don't have the oil going down, the ventilation systems going down, those types of things. And overall, the safety of the kids and the staff, that's where I'm at, hang, I am. And I've seen these systems work, I've seen them use very old frequency devices to do those things. And I've seen energy saves, cut energy costs, and had in a distribution that we're doing these things. So there, the numbers, I don't know if they're real deal, but they're close. In my. They're, that, I, that's.
You know, there's, one of us, Chris Paul, sorry.
Right, but they.
You leave that space.
Number two.
So, yeah.
So, I just wanna caution for the partners, be cautious that we're not, we need all of this, so do we wait? And then have to spend money after money after money after money, good money after bad money, you know, or do we fight both for the kids, the staff, and schools? And maybe we have to take it to the town with an honest plea, and say, you have schools that are deteriorating rate so freaking fast, because we worry about much money we're spending, that the kids are in harm's way, and the staff is in harm's way.
I, I thought some people, oh, that when I said this, but I'm gonna say with all due respect, as, as a student, it's a fact, there, and I attacked here for nineteen years now, and we have, whether we agree or not, we have all paid our tuition that was out of us. And we trust that the schools have been taken care of, not gotten to this point. So for this to be repeated, we would want all these things, this pick, no matter what it costs, we wanna retain all of our staff, and we wanna, you know, make sure that the kids have all these things, but yeah, of course, we all do, I'd like to have everything wonderful in my head too. But when it goes home, I gotta fix projects and pick away from them until everything else is there. And I think that there's a lot of experience that you can't have everything all at once in a state for it. And we would love to get to the point to where we don't have all of these things at once, and can have everything taken care of, and say, okay, now we can invest, you know, to these really great, you know, things for teachers and expand things, and whatever. But it's, it's a really tough, um, for everything.
We had, I suppose, over a thousand dollars, that was definitely a share, we haven't come fresh with claims. Hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars this week, because these things are there. If this, if this fix wasn't, I was hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars, uh, would not have suddenly disappeared out of your budget. So I hear what you're saying, but, you know, I'm hearing straight, yeah, we're not talking to a furnace, there's, we're not, and, and I would argue that controls directly, like, what are we putting in, can't control, and that's, and that's, 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 I'm not consistent, yeah, because we're not, that not only, the controls not a D, but they're not talking to each other, and some of those have multiple, multi-systems, and it's not speaking to each other. So I'm, that is probably, is good, so, you know, don't sit one room and see what's going on across the entire, you know, multi, you know, our campus, and our games, and that's, yeah, that's how we sell it, but, um, like, not doing that in mind, it causes money, costs this money, not fixing money, it costs this money, and so, you know, I.
I know, you know, it needs to be fixed, which I'm, I think, I have to take a test somewhere else, then, I mean, this is just where we're at, we can't have everything that we will have once at this point. And that's just the way it, it's, it's come to a point that it should have never been, it's not even just one school we're talking about, whole major project, it's all preschools, because a lot of major projects, and they're all very important. They don't, I mean, it's, it's really a complicated situation.
Yeah, I wanted to talk, Randy was also saying, not only are the control, we're not talking to each other, we can only hire certain groups of people and companies to come.
That, that's why, so not only is, like, if we have to get it fixed, we have to talk to that person X, but we have to talk to the Y, depending on what, that, that is a mess, like, that, you know, proof, you know, I entirely understand, and my, that's the idea there, is getting these things that are talking to each other.
I just wanna speak out to you about budget, because like, he, he probably wants to narrow it more, three per day a year, right, he might go that way, right, how he got two more, he has to flash, so you're it. If, if the math was right, by the time he gets the two acres on the roof, that would bring it up to three hundred and seven thousand dollars, so where then, if he just, I, we just put this, everything that we have, I know all the processes, so he goes through this, and by the time we have the name, there's three hundred thousand dollars payment, that are two days, that's our roof should be, so that can free up three hundred, it would be more than a month.
Yeah, three.
Three, okay, so that will actually be free in a, in a person, but if I'm so unclear, we swear that it's probably together, does, it's, we expect us this year to pump it up, and that year, because of that, you know, we, we, I, I, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get to the water, the question is for obvious reasons, because we need to know exactly what we're providing, we need to know the code.
Sure.
And I, this is where I'm profitable, that's if socks are offered, but I, we have trust issues, we have the, this is the, but I have forty years, we're on here, we're, with different companies, we need this, we don't need that, and if they're very good, we help it, so I'm like, I don't know, it creates a, how, what, this, our school, I want this to be done, both, I'm really, I care, nobody, you want us to keep kicking that, that keep knocking on the door, because the money's still just changing and changing when you're the first. So just say, you know, you know, I think it's on the fence right now, I know it needs to be done, socks, that's just my money, but if it comes, yeah, I think probably can, they bring it clear on some of the things, or what are we doing? And this, the, of course, I can live saying that for now, we do this and are, not, first, we have, we go back and talk to the option, so we really, we got to go on, right, like, is it, are we losing, that work is, is the primary, probably expense for this project, because it's difficult, we don't.
Duck work is not the primary defense, your control system's gonna be the primary defense.
Okay.
That's a lot of money in control systems.
Then adding that, without.
Then adding that work would be an expensive, you did control systems, control systems are extremely expensive, the B F Bs that they would put in would be extremely expensive. But as you heard me say, it may be other debate that you would get on things, when I put B F Bs into the distribution center in California, I hit Calus and, uh, jumped up back fifty percent of these, uh, B F B in money, and said, we'll go after that money.
So maybe that's what we need, and like.
We need to understand that. Maybe, maybe we should ask them, okay, what, what, what is the control system gonna cost, what is the, um, duck work, the cost, and those types of things, what about the installation quality of the building, what is that gonna cost? But that's how they're gonna get savings too, so you, you gotta, we gotta weigh all, all of it, I mean, I think we need more for me, and harder numbers, uh, but I don't think it's something we can kick down the road again.
They have, they have, because I couldn't see it, it was looking hard, they have great numbers.
Right.
Of course, they need to think, yeah.
Yeah, that was, I think, my largest, yeah, I would say, the only, what, I guess, the only, it's been almost as long as Steve, actually, maybe a little longer, right, in about, we have not been anticipated that, hey, we should have a few things, we always try to scrap. That's where we've gotten here, because we've always used the question, how do we get bought?
Yeah.
So we have buildings and buses, and people, those are the things that we most, and the people that look at the program, to educate our students, and they do, they get the students for this school, that's where I'm at, if, if there's not, having it all is crazy, because if you're saying, if you pay for buildings, you can't educate our students, if we educate our students, we can't build the buildings, do it outside. It's just, it's driving me crazy that there's this belief that the people came for it, screwed the fuck, they know, they did the best thing, but what we're able to do for, so it just, I, it's, I guess, please, let's not, probably, of course.
I, I, I agree, I disagree.
So let's, let's have a talk, talk.
I, I, I was, um, five percent places for, for everybody, but no, we, we can't continue to do all of these things all at once. It is great, we can have a light clap, raise, and everything else, but you can't do all of this at once in this way, everything that's wrong.
Anyone else have some discussion points before we wrap, we will be talking about this again this week, yeah.
Cause I will be at the office meeting, so I'd just like to say, I was the last meeting, when they were talking about the C O levels in the high school, and they were talking about the duck work, they were talking about dirty woods, and so, and my point is, how, how, we clean the duck work, and we check the levels again, because we're, obviously, I, I don't know that, if the duck was dirty, and we're, probably first in the duck, then second gear, or we like, go to all of this, expect some trouble, other things, I just, I always, to be mindful now, there are some, there are some people who sell stuff to us, so, like, it's not, obviously, I have room in this district, I would like them to have, really everything again. But I have been around, budget failed twice in a row, like, there's lots of people begging against reality, so they're like, okay, how will we explore all of our options before we start that the most expensive one out, I think, have a look at that.
Do you, uh, I don't talk the, so Randy, I don't understand, there is no ventilation in mine, which means we're basically just pumping in hot air, more steam, more teak rooms, so even if we clean the duck here, what I'm saying, is that air isn't moving out of every room, beginning, so. Oh, yeah.
They're, they're not big enough, four on the side, you need like, three or four of them in there.
I, I would, yeah, so we ran off of them, there's artificial, got three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Okay, that's, okay, I bet this is a great, it's soft, that is, it's just not, is it?
Yep.
I think that's a smart move there, but my recommendation would be, you've got to have a little bit more in the budget season as to what the overall budget looks like, as well as the direction of how many S N R F projects we're gonna get, and if we get on three, that's four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars per year also too. Uh, and so there's, have these hard decisions there, is there yes, please, all of those are no thank yous in there, and how do you justify that, we need to stop, I'll just get limited, and like, through F R N, so there's, there's missing pieces that I can have to think about.
Good question, so it'll be on the agenda in January?
Okay.
Okay. Do you want to pre-vote? All will like vote in February after the S N R F information comes out. Yeah, that's cute, thank you so much, okay.
Just that, that decision being created now?
Yeah, there's no motion.
There's no motion to decide anything, it's just.
I'm just, I'm saying, whether we will vote for this next one. Are you saying, um, you're gonna say, you're gonna question, or we're going to question this decision back then?
I recommend that we talk about it again in January, by whether we win or not, in late January, and then make the decision in February, once we know what we're dealing with, the budget committee will admit, for a time, so then, we'll have that, for me, for the first, ready, beginning of February.
Also, I have this, um, recall to prior presentations, is their concern, their, um.
Scheduling, crews, and ordering.
For doing other tech positions necessary to the project, uh, so pushing into the.
Yeah.
Tech, tech.
Yeah, I get that, but also thinking about what precedent of that, you know, you have to work in hell once, you have to try to prioritize, so I, I would feel comfortable to decide until we know S N R F results, but, Andrea?
Let's draw the agenda, we're gonna decide by five minutes, we have one, first, rank, step to achieve the log, right, step three, place, or.
Doesn't change the mind, right, everything's fine, change, we didn't get, we didn't get, what's three, so it feels like it's fine, you know, yeah.
The difficult, and.
Right, no, it changes. Okay, and, I mean, we're, we kind of plan, like, week before, so I think it will depend on how it goes in January, how the information is coming together, and if the board, we can only decide not approve, most, and we get other to ask in the February, while we feel like we want to, because it's so much money, so we thought we'd be comfortable with the process. Monday, we're getting out of the school. Yep. Yep. We all, move, move along, we just got the jet to go. Okay, so now, on the agenda, we're at nineteen now, we need a motion to approve the financials as mentioned by the personnel and financial committee at the November twenty-fourth meeting. Andrea? Thank you. Alyssa? Thank you. Any discussion on financials, if you guys have anything to say, so.
Anyone have any questions?
All right, hearing none, I'll go ahead and vote on that, will it favor approving financials? Okay, um, now we need the motion to nominate a school board, or to join the super committee, to stay in the committee, as recommended by the cell financial committee from their November twenty-fourth meeting.
Comment, most, you approve. I'd say, oh, good.
Yeah, it was for nomination.
Yeah, we can have a nomination, we can have volunteers, I know a couple people have expressed willingness to do that, um, not everyone would have that submitting, so, I just wanted to bring it to everyone, Jeff? Well, that's not necessarily, I was just hoping to ask about whether our, that it just separate from the, could be first, also wanted to, there should be somebody different, just for clarity, perspectives. We talked about it, what? And this is a one, one and done, January twenty-sixth.
Twenty-eight, eight, eleven.